Boulder County Public Health. And welcome, and I want to start our meeting as we usually do with inviting public comment. Jordan, I know you have a number of people signed up and we've also received their written comments. So Jordan, I'll let you guide us through the public comment part.
Okay, and just confirm with Lexi and Kate, that is the first, the first portion. Okay, all right, seize the headnotes. Okay, all right. Yes, thank you. Good evening all. My name is Jordan Thomas. I'm the Business Operations Manager for Boulder County Public Health. Thank you to those who submitted written comments. The board received a copy in preparation for this meeting. So I would go down the list of order of submission for public comment. Your three minutes and we'll start whenever you're ready. And let me start sharing my slide because we have a timer. Hey. So. One second, Teams is being teams. All right, so the first member on the list is Brianna Barber. So Brianna, whenever you're ready, your three minutes can begin.
Hello, Board of Health and Public Health staff. Thank you for calling this special session and allowing us to give public comments today. My name is Brianna Barber. I work in the Commissioner's Office at Boulder County and have been with the county for the last five and a half years. I have also been a resident of Boulder County for 15 years and have benefited from the outstanding programs that Public Health offers. I am also an organizing committee member with the Boulder County Employees Union. For the last year and a half, I have worked alongside Public Health employees to organize our union. A significant percentage of Public Health workers have signed union cards. We are well above the threshold required by the Collective Bargaining by County Employees Act to hold an election. We agree with the bargaining unit determination ruling issued on October 14th from the Colorado Department of Labor and Employment and are confident it will be affirmed by CDLE. Boulder County Employees Union believes that Public Health workers are correctly included in the proposed bargaining unit and should be able to vote in the upcoming union election. According to the American Journal of Public Health, labor unions are uniquely situated to address inequalities in health, while empowering workers and addressing the power inequalities at the heart of community health. Unions also address the physical, psychological, and social conditions of work while attacking the underlying inequalities of social determinants of health, like higher income, safe workplaces, job security, and healthcare access. Public Health workers keep our communities safe and thriving. Our union will give them a collective voice and allow them to participate in workplace decisions democratically. Our union will improve the lives of Public Health employees and the people they serve. Thank you to the members of the Board of Health for supporting Public Health employees. We ask you continue this support by adopting a pro-union stance that allows Public Health employees to vote and negotiate under COPCA for fair wages, job security, work-life balance, and fair treatment at work. And with my remaining time, I'll just say that we have, my family has recently benefited from the Children with Special Needs Program and have met with some of the nurses there and just want to give a huge shout out to them and all the work they're doing because it has made an instrumental impact and like a huge impact on our lives. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Goodness. Okay, next up, we have Alejandra. Your three minutes will start whenever you're ready. Do I need to unmute you? Alejandra Beatty. Okay, we'll go on to the next one. Melanie Nieman. So whenever you're ready, your three minutes will start.
Thank you. My name is Melanie Nieman and I have worked for Boulder County Public Health for 22 years. I started as an admin lead tech for the Community Health Division six months after 9/11. I was promoted to the web specialist position in 2008 and I've been on the communications team for the past 16 years. I'm passionate about Public Health Communications and this is my dream job. I intend to work for BCPH until I retire. I'm currently blessed with a skillful supervisor and I know I'm fortunate. I want to help improve a good workplace and help protect the workers who desperately need protections. I started working with the Boulder County Employees Union Organizing Committee two and a half years ago. This team has labored tirelessly to organize Boulder County workers. Public Health is one of the most well-organized departments in Boulder County with a majority of eligible Public Health workers having signed on as union supporters. Public Health workers deserve to vote on unionization with our fellow Boulder County workers and we believe the Colorado Department of Labor and Employment will uphold its decision to allow us to. All Boulder County workers deserve to have a voice in the workplace. We, the workers at Public Health, should have the right to fight for better wages, benefits, and working conditions. And thanks to COPCA, we have that right. The decision to include BCPH will set a precedent for health departments throughout the state. Boulder County is one of the country's most expensive places to live. Many of our full-time workers must work a second job to get by and most can't afford to live in the community they serve. This includes workers who provide highly skilled professional skills. Public Health workers are dedicated public servants and essential workers who give their hearts and souls to ensuring that everyone in Boulder County has the opportunity to live a healthy life. We should not be blocked from joining the rest of the county in a bargaining unit. We are confident that the Boulder County Board of Health will support Public Health workers in their inclusion with the larger Boulder County unit because we know that you deeply understand the work of the work being done by Public Health staff. Unions benefit workers by offering better workplaces, but they also benefit employers. Unions can help improve the working environment by lobbying for better safety practices and wages. This leads to increased productivity and lower turnover. As we've all experienced during COVID, turnover is costly financially and highly damaging to morale. Having a more stable workforce will benefit managers and team members. Boulder County and Boulder County Public Health have expressed that racial equity is a core priority. Labor unions can directly impact progress on racial equity by reducing the potential negative impact of supervisors who may be influenced by racial bias. We look forward to your support and we are confident that CDLE will uphold its decision in our favor. Thank you for your time.
Okay, my timer stopped working, so I'm going to stop sharing my screen to go on to the next one. Alejandra, I saw you rejoin. Is your mic working now?
In theory.
Okay, in theory, okay. All right, I can hear you. And your three minutes will start whenever you're ready.
Excellent, thank you. All right, sorry about that. So my name is Alejandra Beatty. I am president for the Boulder Area Labor Council, representing nearly 2,500 area workers, including Boulder County. I am here to talk to all of you, thank you for having me, about how important it is that we support the Public Health worker's right to organize a union and negotiate the union contract. These rights recently granted to county workers under state law passed in 2022 are being threatened by a legal challenge from Boulder County. This legal challenge flies in the face of state law and Boulder County's avowed labor rights and equity principles. Union membership and collective bargaining is the single most effective way for working people to get a voice at work for workplace safety and equity. This is not an opinion, it is a fact. And I shared a number of articles in my written testimony to support this effort. In particular, those who care about workplace health and equity and safety should support workers forming unions. But another way, people cannot legitimately claim to support workplace health and safety while simultaneously denying workers the right to form a union. Boulder County took a very positive step forward in affirming workers' rights to organize in 2007 with Resolution 20752. However, Boulder County's recent and protracted moves to exclude workers at Boulder County Public Health and at the Housing Authority from union rights is a negation of these principles and a slap in the face to these impacted workers. Boulder Area Labor Council calls on the Board of Health to publicly and immediately affirm your workers' rights to form a union, negotiate a union contract for workplace safety, for workplace equity, and for workplace democracy. You must stand on the right side of history. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next we'd be Jeffrey Davis. So whenever you're ready, your three minutes can begin.
Hi, thank you. Jeffrey Davis, he/him. I want to apologize, I blipped off screen there, my internet went down, so I back on. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am an employee in the Engineering Division of Public Works where I've been since July of about 2022. I love my job, I love my bosses, the people I work with. And I'm actually a land officer over there and the land officer floats around. I work with a number of different departments and divisions. That's one of the best parts about Boulder County is given how many employees and people we have that we get to interact professionally, which is also then personally, which raises morale, which helps with information and helps us be the best in public service. I've gotten to work with, as they say, just about every department. And that's both in my position as a land officer and also as a co-chair of CRIAC, where I've learned a lot from several Public Health employees who I greatly admire. And in addition to working for Boulder County, I've also lived here since 1998, raised my kids here, and I consider Public Health an invaluable component of the public service of Boulder County and so greatly value what is done and consider Public Health an integral part of Boulder County and of Boulder County's workforce. The, so, and I will say just real quickly, by way of background, I'm a land officer, so I'm not an engineer, but I am a recovering lawyer. And many, many years ago, I worked for a large, what's the right term, union avoiding law firm, large international firm. And then the opportunity to become a local government in-house attorney for about 18 years. Obviously, my position on unions is very, very different and has developed. I see a union as invaluable, especially in a county like Boulder where the power structure, the organizational structure, something I'm familiar with as far as governmental entities, is different. This is about how do we best provide the services we're all tasked with doing?
Thirty seconds.
How do we do it together? And how do we make sure that everybody's accountable? That's what it is at the end of the day, is how do we best do our jobs? And all of our mission statements, strategic priorities, stated values, talk about inclusivity and being together. And I sure think this is an opportunity to live up to those values rather than being contrary on that. So I look forward to continuing to work with everybody here and thank you for the time.
Thanks, Jeffrey. All right, next we have Catherine Lehman. Your three minutes will start whenever you're ready.
Okay, well, thanks for the opportunity to comment on this important issue. Catherine Lehman, I'm the Pearl Program Coordinator in Community Action Programs in the Community Services Division of Boulder County, as well as a resident in the mountains of unincorporated Western Boulder County. I've been with the county for close to a year now. And with a union for Boulder County workers in place, I'm excited for a long career here with the county. I've had a great experience at the county since I started at the beginning of this year. And one of the brightest highlights by far has been getting involved with the Union Organizing Committee as a new house. We're tapping a community of dedicated and passionate county workers from all corners of our organization. As Jeff mentioned, all of this giant organization that I'd otherwise have no idea who they are, what they do, anything about them. The union has given me the opportunity to connect with people from all over the county. And it's given me an incomparable orientation about who county workers are and what we do. And it's given me contacts, people that I can say that I know and that I work with in departments and divisions. From my first contact with our union, it was clear to me the hard work, passion, and solidarity that have gone into this organizing effort for over two years. And I feel so fortunate to have been able to get on board right when I started my job. Many of the county employees who have made me feel so at home here are the amazing people I've gotten to know in Public Health. All county workers deserve a voice in our workplace. And the CDLE's bargaining unit determination a little while back affirmed this. Public Health workers and all other county workers work together, serving the public, right? We must be allowed to work hand-in-hand together as a union to improve our working conditions as well. And I'll I've worked in cities without a union. Wish to God I'd had a union in place to help me out, it might have stayed.
Thirty seconds.
Having a union here would make a difference in, you know, comfort at work, but also just satisfaction, feeling of solidarity, community. And Public Health is definitely part of my community at Boulder County. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we had Martha Lugo signed up, but I do not see them. So we're going to go to Giselle Knoll next. And I don't see Giselle on the participant list either. So we'll switch over to Alberto. So your three minutes will start whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Alberto de los Rios. I use he-day pronouns. And I will start by saying that there's nothing to be afraid about a union in the county. Instead, there's a lot to celebrate and rejoice. I believe and I know by statistical facts that employees that are, that feel seen, heard, and feel that they have a say in how their workplace conditions lay out, don't like to, don't leave, they don't leave their workplaces. A community that is strong, cohesive, a workplace that has a place where you feel valued, you will stay and that saves millions of dollars for employers in training, retention, and it builds community. And it leads to more passionate employees that care deeply about the community. And I know that because this is my second time around working with Boulder County and there's countless amounts of people that care so deeply about the work that they do in public service. And I will also offer that it is imperative that as we look to address social issues around equity and justice, that we also apply that within our workplace. So that when we talk about racial equity, when we talk about giving people the rights and uplifting their voices, that we do so and model that through our workplace. A union is a reflection of the needs of workers and it levels the playfield for those who don't often have the capacity to speak. For those that, over the years, through systemic reasons, have not had the opportunity to be in the main table. And I hope that we recognize that Public Health is part of the general union. It is important that we are affirmed by decision-makers, by our local leaders, that it is a way to voice to the community, to Boulder County, and to everybody that what we're doing here is monumental. We're setting precedent for so many other communities to know that us as government employees have the right and should work together collectively to bargain, to address what is best for us. And and I guarantee you that we're going to look back at this in a couple of years and we're just going to say, wow, look at how far we've come, look at all the amazing things we've achieved. And let's look at numbers, let's look at retention and overall well-being. I invite you all to make these changes. And it's so imperative that we start by speaking and affirming this effort. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Michael. Michael, your three minutes will start whenever you're ready.
All right, thank you so much. Hello, Board. Thank you so much for this time to speak. My name is Michael Wu. My pronouns are he/him/his. I work in Public Health in the Strategic Initiatives Branch. And I've been with Boulder County Public Health for almost three and a half years. I'm approaching that amount of time and of which I've spent about a year and a half to two years with the Organizing Committee trying to get our employees unionized. And one of the things that I do, I'm the Population Health Epidemiologist, which just means I deal with a lot of numbers, a lot of trying to communicate trends and things like that. And one of the big things that I see when it comes to data is just whether or not people of color are being represented properly in our, in our Boulder County agencies. Not just Public Health, but just across the board with all of our, all of our agencies, Housing Authority, and et cetera. And the fact is, you know, we've seen surveys showing that, especially all the way up to the leadership levels, that people of color are not being properly represented. And what's, what we're also seeing is that the attrition rates or the rate of which people of color are leaving are higher than those of white, non-Hispanic backgrounds. And, you know, I think part of the problem that we're seeing is that people of color at the workplace, either among colleagues or from the public are just receiving pretty negative comments, whether or not they're justified. Generally, they're not. I think that that is part of what's causing people to not feel appreciated and not want to stay within the county and wanting to work with them. And now we have a president-elect who's coming on board, who's made public and constant, consistent, incendiary comments about people of color. And, you know, what are we going to see going forward in the future when it comes to this new
Thirty seconds.
this new climate? And I think what is concerning is that people of color are going to continue to feel unseen, unheard, and unappreciated. And, you know, one of the things that I'm really hoping that you guys would do is to be able to show public comment, public support for our organizing efforts. That doesn't, doesn't just support Boulder County agencies across the board, but Public Health as well.
That's time.
And we're going to see, okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, Michael. All right, next we have Jade. So Jade, your three minutes will start whenever you're ready.
Hello and thank you, Jordan. My name is Jade Kelly. I am a university staff member at CU Boulder. And I've been lucky enough for the past three years, just re-elected to my fourth term as president of CWA Local 7799. We are your favorite union's favorite union. We have six unions in our local, including UCW Colorado, UC Health Workers United, Denver Health Workers United, Denver Public Library Workers United, Pikes Peak Library Workers United, and the Defenders Union of Colorado for workers in the state public defender system. And I was speaking tonight in support of the rights of Boulder County Public Health employees, their basic human rights to form a union. Our union, CWA Local 7799, has nearly 1,000 members who look, who live and work in Boulder County and who are protected by and rely on the crucial work of BCPH employees that they do every single day. Our union has fought tirelessly for collective bargaining rights for public sector employees in our state. And honestly, it is absurd and reprehensible that in 2024, there are still tens of thousands of public employees who are excluded from the basic human right of forming a union and negotiating with our employer. I've worked at CU Boulder for over 10 years now and I am one of those public sector employees who are also excluded from the right to collectively bargain. Our workers' rights law in Colorado are broken. We have had to watch in silence as our health, our civil rights, our workplace protections are dismissed in boardrooms without us, debated as necessary austerity cuts, and ultimately sacrificed as our public institutions have been pushed privatization at the peril of everyone in our community. These laws are broken and they make workers more vulnerable to workplace safety accidents and risks. You have the power to fix our broken laws for BCPH and grant your employees the right to form a union and collectively bargain, whether or not they are included in the bargaining unit with the rest of Boulder County. The right to sit across from the table from your employer, have a say in what our workplace looks like, to be seen as human. It is the right thing to do for workers' rights, for humans' rights, for safe workplaces, for a better Boulder County. And I urge you, and just in closing, please, take the testimony from every single worker that spoke in here tonight seriously. This is incredibly important for the right to form a union and the right to collectively bargain in Boulder County and every workplace across the country. It strengthens workplaces, it strengthens equity, and it really is important to make sure
Thirty seconds.
that Boulder Health is incredibly important to our community and stays it, the pillar of health it has in our entire community. So thank you.
Yeah, that concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you so much to each of you for showing up this evening and for sharing your comments with us and your written comments ahead of the meeting. I know that, you know, I, I want to respond and I know the other board members want to respond and have some discussion. But I think we're going to hear from Lexi next with a brief presentation and then we can have some board discussion.
Thanks so much, Morgan. I'm Lexi Nolan. I'm the Executive Director of Boulder County Public Health. I use she/her pronouns. I think you all know that the General Assembly adopted the Collective Bargaining by County Employees Act, or COPCA, to help county employees collectively bargain with county employers. And recently, in its determination regarding Boulder County specifically, CDLE, which oversees these determinations, found that Public Health employees are covered by COPCA and should be included in the Boulder County Bargaining Unit. However, that determination included some inaccuracies that caused Boulder County to seek reconsideration from CDLE. For example, the determination erroneously asserts that Boulder County Commissioners serve as the Board of Health. And clearly, that is not the case. This determination, we are concerned that it creates uncertainty over the person or intimate entity that's ultimately responsible for the terms of Public Health employment and has the potential to undermine Boulder County Public Health autonomy under a separate Board of Health. These concerns, I want to be really clear that these concerns regarding the determination are not concerns over the desire for Public Health employees to engage in collective bargaining. And in fact, there are additional opportunities for Public Health employees to organize. Rather, we are concerned that the lack of clarity and accuracy included in the determination could lead to problems and confusions later with the potential to actually disadvantage Public Health employees in the future. I want to be very clear that Boulder County Public Health leadership strives to ensure our employees receive the salaries, benefits, and protections enjoyed by other county staff. And that this is not an intention to undermine union formation. So with that said, I would like to go through a few of the details around the, the challenge that we're facing. So just to be clear, this kind, this slide kind of outlines what COPCA is and that it's a statutory framework for county employees to organize. And as I said, it's administered by CDLE. To be very clear, COPCA is different from PropWA. All wonderful acronyms. PropWA stands for the Protections for Public Workers Act, which is an additional set, a separate additional set of laws intended to help a broader group of public employees beyond county employees to organize without interference. Next slide. So the Boulder County Bargaining Unit, so CDLE's proposed Boulder County Bargaining Unit includes Public Health employees. And they issued this determination finding that BCPH employees are county employees covered by COPCA. And so what's important is to recognize that the bargaining unit proposed by the organizers and county employer can provide a feedback in the form of objections with CDLE being the initial decision-maker. And in this case, CDLE, in its determination, found Public Health employees to be county employees over the county's objection based on the distinct legal status of the county and BCPH under state law. So this is really about over the county's objection based on the distinct legal status, um, of the county and BCPH under state law. So this is really about the, the, um, legal status of BCPH as a separate legal entity. Um, however, um, as I've mentioned, the CDLE's findings appear to be based, at least in part, on some significant errors contained in the determination that I'd like to just review really quickly with you all. So this is just an example from CDLE's determination. And what you'll notice here, um, is that it incorrectly states that county commissioners appoint themselves to serve on the Board of Health. It's, it's really, it's an entirely different set of folks on the Board of Health than the county commissioners. It, and because they made this assumption that, um, the county commissioners serve as BCPH's Board of Health, they said that it only has three members. And in fact, it has five members. And, uh, I will say that, uh, the architecture of public health departments in Colorado is different in different counties. Some counties do have county commissioners that serve as their Board of Health. Some, uh, public health departments are actually just part of the county. But in Boulder County, we have a separate, we are a separate legal entity and have a separate Board of Health that is responsible for, um, making authoritative decisions, um, in regard to the agency. So, um, so the county submitted a motion for reconsideration to CDLE based on the inaccuracies that were contained in the determination. Um, and to hold a hearing to determine in what the correct bargaining unit would be in this case and, uh, identifying the factual and legal errors. Um, and they are scheduled to meet on November 14th, um, which is just two days away. And so if the Board, um, of Health, you all want to respond to CDLE's determination, it would be helpful to send something in writing ahead of CDLE's meeting with Boulder County on Thursday. And what that might include is clarification that the Board of County Commissioners are not the same as the Board of Health. The commissioners can't designate themselves as the Board per statute. That the Board of Health and the Public Health Director have their own statutory powers separate from the county commissioners. Recognizing that there is a history of BCPH as a separate organizational unit and that we have agreements with the county and that we exercise and retain our own statutory authorities also. The COBCA exclusion for other political subdivisions of the state may be a better place for, uh, Boulder County Public Health to avoid those conflicting authorities across legal entities. And, uh, I will just also mention that we, uh, as Boulder County Public Health, um, in the county, we have an intergovernmental agreement that we've had in place for a long time that shows a significant amount of collaboration while reserving independent authority. And CDLE's COBCA interpretation, the problem is that it inserts the county commissioners into BCPH policymaking. And we're not really clear that this was the legislature's intent or how this would work if a disagreement, if a disagreement arose between governing parties or within the bargaining unit. So, um, if the Board of Health would like to, um, send a letter to CDLE in support of Boulder County's motion for reconsideration, consistent with the proposed response, which is what we just talked about. And, uh, and to authorize, uh, Board President McMillan to review the language inside the letter, we would want to, uh, request that a board member make a motion to approve submission of the letter to, to, from the Board of Health to CDLE in support of reconsideration and clarification to authorize the Board President to finalize the language of the letter on behalf of the Board of Health. So I think we do want to take a pause here. And step back for the board to have a conversation about, um, the, the pros and cons of this proposal.
Thanks, Lexi. And, um, and I'm going to go ahead and just start, um, the discussion because I do want to take a moment to recognize the employees that we heard from this evening. And I, I want to say it's, it's a treat to hear from so much of our employees that we don't usually like to hear from at our public health meetings. So I really appreciate the opportunity to hear from you, to see your faces, to hear, um, about what this department and this work means to you and your passion for public health. Really thank you for, for showing up this evening and sharing that with us and for sending your written comments. I mean, I think we, uh, had an executive session. When was that? Was that last week, I think? To just get clarity from the county attorneys about what, um, CDLE's ruling means for us. And, and, um, and again, and just listening to Lexi revisit that interpretation by CDLE on the presentations, I think the concerns that come up for me, you know, have nothing to do with how this Board of Health feels about our employees' right to organize. And I think just to clarify, we, we are not taking a stance against, um, our workers' right to organize, um, or the importance of unions in, in protecting rights for our employees. So I just really want to be clear that, um, if we decide this evening to sign on to the position that the commissioners are taking, it is not a statement against, um, our employees joining a union or their right to organize. It's really, to me, about the authority of this board to have control over our own negotiations that would impact our budget. And I think given the year that we have had, especially in the last year, uh, this Board of Health has new insights as to how important it is for us to manage that budget very carefully. Um, and to know that, you know, we, when it comes down to it, we really need to just depend on ourselves to ensure the sustainability of, of this department. Um, so I, I think that's my greatest concern with how CDLE's interpretation is that it is unclear that this Board of Health would have any role in negotiating, um, with a union as CDLE, CDLE has ruled. So we might not even have a seat at the table in those negotiations with our, you know, if our employees were included in that. So that's a big concern. And then also, you know, this Board of Health has its own authority separate from the county commissioners in this county, and that is true of most other counties across the state. And so it feels very important that CDLE understand that the statutory difference between county department, public health across most of the state and, um, the county commissioners, um, and, and that we fix this, this issue within their ruling, not just for this county, but for lots of other counties. So, um, that's, that's my feelings about it. Um, and I invite other board members to weigh in. But again, I, I just really, really appreciate hearing from our employees this evening and, and the time and the energy that you have put into not only this effort, but in all of our public health work that you are doing, um, in your daytime roles also. Um, so thank you for that. There other Board of Health members who want to weigh in here?
Hey, Morgan, this is Lindy. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Um, just, I wanted to just reiterate a couple of the points you've made, Morgan. In support of what you've said, I think first and foremost, thank you to everyone that's spoken tonight. It's really powerful. Great to hear, um, the ask, I think, from a lot of staff. And I think there is a way that we can enable, um, collective bargaining in, in a way that will work for us from a legal and statutory perspective. So I just want to make sure I'm underscoring the point that as we talk to our attorneys in executive session, there is a disconnect between how we are structured as a separate entity from the county and need to really align around how we can be most effective under that structure. So this is in no way intended to prohibit or prevent public health employees from organizing and collectively bargaining. But we want to be able to do this in a way that is structurally and legally effective. So just want to underscore that. And Morgan, thank you for saying all the things that you did say. And just wanted, you know, again, to just explain our rationale as we move to our vote.
Thanks, Lindy. Are there any other board members?
This is Brooke.
Yep.
Yeah. I just, yeah, I think Lexi, Lexi and Morgan, you all said it very well, exactly hit all of the points. We just want to clarify with CDLE because I, I think that they've made an error that they did not intend to make and it could impact the rest of the state. So, yeah. Thank you, Lexi and Morgan.
Okay. If there are no other comments by other board members, um, then, um, I think Lexi, you've got, uh, you have asked that the board consider, I think we have to make a formal motion.
Yeah, Jordan, can you just put that last slide back up and then so that we can see the language that you want for the motion?
I'll push that back onto Kate.
Oh, Kate.
Yeah, sorry. It's okay. Thanks.
Okay. I move to request that the Board of Health approves to send a letter to CDPH in support of Boulder County's motion for reconsideration, consistent with the proposed response from the Board of County Commissioners, correct?
Sorry, and point of emphasis, is it?
I apologize. I accidentally wrote CDPH on that because that's who I always talk about when I'm with you folks. Uh, Brooke, if you wouldn't mind repeating that and saying CDLE instead, sorry.
And the proposed responses from the Board of County Commissioners, correct?
The, um, the proposed response is actually what is summarized in this slide. The motion for reconsideration is what went out from the county commissioners.
Okay. Uh, so, okay. So I request that the Board of Health approves to send a letter to CDLE in support of Boulder County's motion for reconsideration, consistent with their proposed response. We would also authorize Board President Morgan McMillan to review language and sign the letter on behalf of the Board of Health.
Thanks, Brooke. We need a, a second.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. And, um, any discussion on this item? Okay, hearing, none, then all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So that motion passes. And again, I just really can't emphasize enough our appreciation for our employees and all the thought and heart that you are putting into this effort. And, um, we just really want to clarify that this Board of Health is independent from the county commissioners.
Okay. So, um, thank you. Uh, given some of the time constraints and the need to be able to, um, have an effective meeting when Boulder County meets with CDLE on Thursday, um, we have prepared a letter in anticipation, consistent with the concerns that we shared with you all and the necessary clarifications that we discussed. Um, the letter would include, clarity that, um, public health employees are not county employees insofar as the COBCA language asserts. That we would correct the factual correction that the Board of Health is not comprised of Boulder County Commissioners and the number who serve on them. That the, uh, county commission, that the BOCC does not sit as the Board of Health or appoint county, uh, commissioners to serve on the Board of Health. That state law prohibits the county commissioners from designating themselves as the Board of Health because of our county's size. And the fact that our Board of Health predates 2008 legislation. So this is all in statute. Give a little bit of a history of BCPH as an organization, just to help them understand, um, the credibility of the argument that, um, BCPH was organized by BOCC, by the BOCC in 1957. That the Board of Health was established in 1975, that we entered into an intergovernmental agreement in 1981 so that we could align personnel policies and salary classifications so that, um, with the provision that either group could terminate upon a year's notice, um, and retain their respective authorities, um, that the, uh, commit, the BOCC redesignated BCPH as the Public Health Agency for Boulder County and appointed five residents as Board of Health members in 2008 with the Public Health Act. That the BOCC and the Board of Health in 2010, re-signed the intergovernmental agreement, restating and amending the terms of the 1981 agreement. So just a very significant history about the relationship between the Board of Health and the county commissioners and how there are, uh, separate legal authorities within those roles. To describe a little bit about some of the challenges that we could foresee arising from interpreting COBCA to insert the Board of County Commissioners into BCPH policymaking and the lack of evidence of legislative intent to diminish the authority. We don't think that they meant to diminish the authority of public health officials in favor of county commissioners. And to support the interpretation that, of COBCA that retains BCPH's independent legal status and exclude, excludes the, BCPH from its scope as an other political subdivision of the state. Um, so that's what would, we would propose to include in the letter. And, um, we would request a, a board member to make a motion to approve and have the president sign on to this letter to CDLE in support of Boulder County's motion for reconsideration.
Is that what we just passed though, Lexi, with our? I think you were just walking us through the content of the letter, but I think we just passed that.
Yeah. I think we already did.
But it's good to know the contents of the letter. I appreciate that. And I think that's important for everyone on the call to also hear what the contents of the letter would, would be. So thanks for walking through those sections.
Yeah.
Yeah, Lexi, thank you. I think, I think that's, I, I like the history that we've given as well, just to kind of help educate a little bit more in terms of, you know, why we're calling this to lighten how important it is just from a historical perspective, but also statutory perspective. So thank you for that.
Okay, so, I think that the other piece that we want to be sure is, comes as part of this discussion this evening, is that we have some communication with our employees at BCPH that also clarifies for those who are not on this call or who, um, don't have a chance to watch this meeting. Um, we just really want to be sure that we're communicating that, that clarity around what our position is and isn't. So emphasizing that our position is to assert our authority as a Board of Health that's separate from the county commissioners, that we, you know, that authority over our own budget and negotiation, negotiating with our employees. And that this is not a position that is anti-organizing or unionization of our employees. So, I think that's the other piece that I'd like to see come out of this is that there is communication with our employees that clarifies that. Is that something, um, Lexi, you can work on drafting with?
Absolutely. And, um, we can, we can both have something in writing and help the board prepare something. Um, but I would also, um, like to invite staff to have conversations about this, just to make sure that, um, we are on the same page and we hear concerns that may be coming forward so that we can, um, respond most effectively as, as this process continues to roll out.
That's great. And I, yeah, and I, I would ask for those staff who have been involved in this effort and who are here, um, on the meeting this evening. You know, please continue to have communication, um, with, with us because we, we do want to honor the effort that you all are putting in. And, um, and we appreciate you also helping, um, your coworkers understand the position we're taking. Because I, I really would hate to see this be, um, misconstrued as a board statement against organizing, um, as a union. That is, that is not what this is. And we appreciate your help in clarifying that for your, um, fellow coworkers as well.
Yeah. And I would just add one other thing, Morgan, that, um, if the state had not already also passed PropWA as an alternative for organizing for public health staff, we might be having a different conversation today about how to respond to this issue. So, um, just the fact that, um, there is space for our staff, um, to have a path forward regardless of what happens, I think is important.
Yeah. Um, thanks, Lexi. Yeah, um, thanks, Lexi, for that as well. And, um, I, uh, I'm happy to work with you, Lexi, on, um, uh, communication to the employees that will come from the Board, right? So this is not communication coming from you, but this will be a communication from, from this Board about, again, clarifying our position.
Thank you.
Okay.
This is Lyndy. Quick question to this, Lexi emphasizing more than just a letter. Is there something more specific or formal we want to talk about in that regard? I just, what I don't want is for staff to not know where to go to ask questions or who to go to, since this is a Board of Health decision. So can we just talk a little bit about process around that, just so we're not leaving that kind of hanging?
Yeah, thanks, Lyndy. I, that's, that is important because I just invited open communication, but also it's unclear how that communication would work. Um, and, you know, and, and if there are also questions about, um, clarifying what the legal positions are, um, I don't know, Kate, I'd ask for you to weigh on here too because we really rely on the county attorneys to give us legal advice in this case. So, um, I don't know, and for other county employees, like, is there a place where they can ask questions either in, with HR or with the county attorney's office to get clarity around what?
I can snip around. It's my understanding that there are some rules that prohibit, um, you know, us sharing legal advice on that topic. But let me, um, nail that down so that I can provide a, a full, complete answer. Um, but I, I don't think they can just come to us with whatever questions they have.
Right, right. No, I, I get, I get that. I guess I, uh, I, I don't know what role HR is playing also in this in terms of answering questions. But, um, like, I hear what you're saying, Lyndy, like, we, we want there to be a clear place for employees to go with their questions or concerns. Um, and, and I'll tell you, it's probably not my inbox for the most part, just given the other pieces. So I just want to make sure that we can kind of, um, that we can, there's a place to gather those questions and concerns and then share them with the Board in an organized fashion.
Yeah, I, Lexi, since you raised it, maybe could you clarify what you would envision would work best? Because I, I want to make, like, again, I just, I don't want this to just be too open-ended where staff don't know where to go and there's no process. And, you know, so maybe you could help us with, I mean, is there a, like, is there a forum where we have a dialogue with the staff? Do, is there an inbox where they can submit questions? I, you know, I just want to, yeah, that, otherwise I think we're kind of leaving it a little too loose.
So, um, there are rules about the communications in this space, um, that, um, uh, which is part of the reason why we need to bring legal into our, uh, really make sure that we're clarifying that and articulating it in the letter from the Board. But I would also, um, be willing, if it's appropriate, um, to, uh, make sure that, um, staff understand the decision-making by the Board of Health so that there's not confusion about why the Board of Health made this decision. Um, in a, uh, in a more open forum because, uh, what, uh, we are really intentional about right now is, is being sure that we're having open communications with our staff. We, I mean, some of the, um, comments that um, many of our public speakers made about the importance of engagement, I think, um, I really, you know, I, I also believe in. And I just want to make sure that we are having the conversations in ways that we're legally allowed to. Um, but in ways that also are about how do we, um, you know, continue to stay in relationship with each other and in community. Um, and so some clarity about what we can and can't do and how we can have those conversations, I think is something that we need to work out a little bit more with legal, um, so that we can, um, open up as much as we can, um, under the, the kind of the rules that we've been handed.
Okay, that makes sense. Thanks, Lexi.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll continue. I appreciate you raising that point, Lyndy. And, and I think, um, we should continue to figure out how we're gonna, um, communicate on this front. Um, okay. I think that was it for a non-agenda this evening for this special meeting. Okay. Um, thanks, Lexi. Thanks, Kate, um, and Erica and the rest of the label team. Thanks, Jordan, for organizing this so quickly. And, um, thanks to, again, all of the employees for joining us this evening and sharing your thoughts with us. It's really valuable to hear from you.
Thank you all.
I will adjourn the meeting. It is, um, six fifty-eight. Thank you.
Thank you.